Right. If we move to, if I may, to the first item on the agenda, which is the minutes of the last meeting which was held on the 6th of June. Those have been laid on the table for half an hour before the meeting. Are you content, Executive, that I sign those at the end of this meeting?
Agreed.
Thank you. And can I move next to apologies for absence?
None received, Leader.
Thank you. Mr Taylor, any declarations of interest?
Thank you, Leader. councillor Kevin Deane has declared a non pecuniary interest in the agenda, item nine, regarding the Springbok Estate and will leave the chamber during consideration of the item.
Thank you, that's noted. Any other declarations, members? No? Right. If I move to questions from members of the public, we've received several questions from members of the public and in accordance with procedural rule 10, we have noted those questions and those answers will be tabled and sent to the various members who have tabled them. The questions, just for noting, came from Mr Beaman of Farnham, from Mr Steve Cossa, chairman of the Farnham Initiative, from councillor Stephen Reynolds, leader of Godalming Town Council, from Mr Damian Wheeler, from Mrs Joy Poulter, and from Mr John Petty and Mr Martin Sandford. Shall one more? No, right, I haven't got any. And so my apologies, and from Mrs Sheila Smith. Those are all the questions. So all of those have been tabled and noted. Can I therefore move on to item five? And that's the forward programme. I understand we have one speaker, councillor Hyman, you wish to speak on the forward programme?
Good evening, Leader, thank you very much. Very briefly, I have raised this before under these items, where we've got the very first item on page nine of the forward programme is the Brightwell Scheme, and the decision is to bring forward matters when necessary. I'm not entirely certain that this is the correct use, or perhaps I ought to question whether this is the correct use of the forward programme and what is required by the law in terms of where the executive is meant to inform members in the public, and of course overview and scrutiny, of key decisions that are coming forward, and particularly, I understand, when exempt information is going to be considered. I'm sure officers will let you know whether I'm correct in that much, but I can't see that to bring forward matters when necessary is informing us of a key decision that's being made. It's almost like having a complete forward programme that's blank and says you can fill it in as things come along. It's not informing us of a decision that's going to be made, and I have said that perhaps decisions that haven't been made already should be notified. Could you please tell us what decisions regarding East Street are going to come forward? Because we have, perhaps 14, 15 months ago, we're given the impression that there wouldn't be any more key decisions, you'd made them all. So can you please tell us what decisions will be coming forward and when? Thank you.
Councillor Hyman, you're quite right. This is absolutely fine, this is perfectly legal. At the moment, we don't have any more decisions to make, but we leave this as a standing item because this is a project that is in progress and at the moment, it's not closed off. So that is why, but the main council decision has already been made, as you so correctly point out. Thank you. Executive, Brian, councillor Adams, I know you wanted to speak and alter some timings on one of your items.
Following the inspection last week and the week before of the local plan, we've now received quite a number of items from the inspector which we have to consider and clarify. I mean, generally, as you know, it's good news, but I think that means that we're unlikely to be able to offer the local plan for adoption until December 2017, rather than November 2017, as it says under the planning.
Thank you, councillor Adams. So if we amend item three to reflect the change to December 2017, do you want at this stage to make any other change to item two, which is the local plan part two, or do you want to leave that at this stage? I'm looking to Mrs Sims as well, in case you wish to add to that.
Thank you, Leader. I think there may need to be some discussion about the timing for local plan part two, but we can probably bring that as an proposal to change when we're absolutely certain about that to the next meeting. But of course, local plan part two does sit underneath part one, so with the variation you've just agreed, there might be some tweaking, but it won't be significant. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you. Executive, are there any other comments under your forward work programmes that you want to raise? Anything that's not on there that you want to add at this stage? Fine, in that case, I'll take that as agreed. Thank you. And moving to item six, which is the financial outturn report for 2016-17, councillor Hall.
Thank you, Leader. I've not really got that much to say on this item, just to give a quick summary. The general fund outturn is around about 27,000 less than forecast. Supporting people and homelessness rent were more positive than expected, with refuse, recycling and street cleaning being a little bit more negative than we forecast. The general fund capital has a large underspend of about 3.2 million, so we're going to be rescheduling about 2.8 million of it to the 2017-2018 budget. On the HRA, the outturn is around about 22,000 less than forecast, which should be regarded as very small compared with the overall budget of 13.6 million. The HRA capital has an underspend of 3 million due to projects not yet reaching completion, so 2.3 million is to be rescheduled accordingly. There are more details on this point on point eight in the next agenda item. That's all from me, Leader.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hall, any other comments from the executive? Right, we have, under that item, three recommendations. Colleagues, are those agreed?
Are you agree, Leader?
Thank you. And moving to item seven, which is the budget review 2017-18, again councillor Hall.
Thank you, Leader. Members, there are quite a few points on this report which should be noted, and it's, again, my duty to tell you, there are considerable uncertainties at this time which require us to constantly review our macro budget position. The process of the review of the budget is therefore ongoing. As yet, there is no official clarity on the negative grant, which is estimated to be as high as 800,000 pounds, which could be levied by central government. I remind members, this is a significant amount of money relative to our overall budget. Secondly, the new homes bonus is under considerable threat and could cost us somewhere to the tune of 1.1. However, we as yet have no clarity on this issue. The business rates retention plans have also been put on hold by central government, and there's no indication of increases or decreases. I remind members that Waverley take approximately 2 million pounds a year from this scheme. Additionally, there are moves ahead to reduce the amount of money we receive for recycling. As yet, we have no clarity or confirmation on this amount of money, but I can tell members we currently receive about 800,000 pounds a year. Given these uncertainties, it is prudent to continually adjust our medium term financial plan, increase our efficiencies, limit our capital expenditure, ensure all our projects are bid for and monitored rigorously, and where possible, put spare funds into our investment pot to generate future incomes for the services we must provide. Thank you.
Councillor Hall, thank you. I think we'd all agree that the amount of uncertainty from a financial perspective at the moment is not helpful. I know at the LGA conference last week, it was raised by a number of us as a concern across various local authorities, and whilst I think we all agree and understand the need for certain financial prudence, and that includes from the county, we have some significant holes that we are likely to have to plug, and we're not talking small amounts of money, especially the recycling issue. Councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Leader. Just a question here. I know you have a lot of contact with other leaders, you're always talking to each other and discussing problems that we're all encountering with the way the government is funding local borough councils in particular. Can I ask, is there any, I don't know, is there any way we can actually work together on this and try and put pressure on the government or the authorities responsible to try and get a better deal for Waverley? Because as members, all of us, and members of the, you know, of the public ourselves, it's quite important, you know, that we do provide services, and we can't do that unless we get funded properly and effectively. So I wonder whether you can do anything to help the situation?
Yes, I think the biggest issue for us is the uncertainty, because we can't plan when the goalposts are continually being moved, and it's very difficult, we're not mind readers, we, you know, it appears we're continually being reactive instead of proactive. Obviously, as Surrey leaders, we've written and we've made representations to MPs, and that includes the Chancellor. I know there's another meeting in a couple of weeks to, again, underline the issues faced not just by Waverley but by a number of the other Surrey districts and boroughs, because a number of us are in the same position. Last week, you know, we again made very clear to the Secretary of State the need for clarity, and we may not like what he's got to say, but we actually need clarity so we actually know, you know, what our base position is, and then how we can plan accordingly. And I have meetings across the next 10 days scheduled with both our respective MPs, Mrs Milton and with Mr Hunt, to again ask for their support in, you know, really trying to get this message across at the highest level that, you know, we need some help, we need some clarity. Do you want to come back, councillor Edwards?
Just a quick say, to say thank you for all your efforts and keep up the good work.
Mrs King?
Thank you very much, Leader. It's a bit along the same line. Everything you've said about waste management and the general fund also applies to the HRA, and until we get some clarity from the government on where they want to go on the rent situation, we cannot plan for the future. And I must congratulate you on your vigorous support for the whole of the housing market on Channel 4 News. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? In that case, we'll move to the recommendations, of which there are quite a significant number under this item, so we have recommendations one to nine across pages three and four. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. And if I move to item eight... Have I got these two? Yeah, okay. Right. Under item eight, I've got councillor Williams and councillor Welland. I'm not sure in which order you'd like to speak, gentlemen?
We really came along here tonight to talk about the closure of toilet facilities across Waverley. I'll approach it from the more strategic side of things and allow Nick to comment on the more detailed aspect for our particular area. I think it's fair to say that we do recognise that councils are under immense financial pressure. Current toilet facilities are expensive to maintain and often outdated in design. These toilets are discretionary expenditure, superficially easy target when looking for cuts. However, our view is that removing existing facilities without ensuring adequate long-term replacement facilities is a move back to the 19th century and often hits the most vulnerable in our society. To date, we don't perceive that there has been in Waverley a serious long-term discussion and certainly no strategy has been developed to establish how toilet facilities can continue to be provided across the borough at an affordable price for this current century. Discussion at present has primarily been focused on a piecemeal approach, looking on toilet by toilet basis, of what's the cost of keeping one open, more often than not, arriving at the decision to shut it, not on how we can keep a toilet facility here in some shape or form on a long-term basis, even if it's not the existing one. In our view, if Waverley wishes to keep the existing toilet sites, then it should develop a strategy for the 21st century to provide facilities for the public. That should be a proper strategy review, including looking at what other boroughs are doing, engaging with groups campaigning locally and nationally to keep public toilet facilities, to see what we can learn from those groups and what they're undertaking. Should be some form of detailed review of what modern public toilet facilities are on the market and what those cost to put in place and develop. We should also be considering what developments on existing sites could be put in place that could actually effectively self-fund toilet facilities. It's critical, from our perspective, that there should be engagement with town councils and communities as part of that. If this is something the executive does not wish to undertake in terms of strategy review directly, then we would recommend that perhaps that is passed to an ONS committee for a task group to look at within that. As an observation, we did find it slightly frustrating to be told that Environment was the ONS committee that we should address issues on ONS's role to look at, and then to be told that when we reached the date, the Environment Committee, no, it should have gone to community and wellbeing, which sat the week before. So appreciate new committee system, but it would be nice to be a little bit clearer where things go in time to allow us to ask questions to the right committee. Broadly, we think that if Waverley itself does not wish to continue to provide public toilet facilities in the 21st century, then we should consider passing sites of existing toilet facilities across to other layers of local government who may have an interest in developing that strategy for the 21st century. Broadly speaking, my strong preference would be for Waverley to reopen all existing facilities until some form of strategy for providing long-term toilet facilities across the borough is in place, or an agreed devolution of toilet facilities to other local layers of government is developed. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Welland. Councillor Williams?
Thank you, Leader. Thanks for giving me a little time to make a few points, rather a brief summing up rather than a speech. I'm not going to highlight all the points. I have certainly seen some of the letters from other members of the town council, and I can guess what is said in others as well, so I'm not going to repeat that. I think, running on from what Ross has said, and I support everything he has put to you, running on from that, I think we can at least agree that this has not been our finest hour. We all believe in communication, but in this case, many have been kept out of the loop, and perhaps we can learn from that. We approach the issue from the standpoint that none of the public conveniences, which I'll call PCs from now on, should have been closed without suitable alternatives for the residents of Godalming and Farncombe. We would like them to be reopened now and immediate discussions to take place between officers of Waverley and Godalming. These to be treated as a priority to achieve a settlement. The town council is meeting on Thursday, and this will be vigorously debated by all of us, and there are members of the town council here. We are also fully supported by the Chamber of Commerce, and at least one or more of our members are with them this evening. The chamber likely fear that unless there is adequate provision of PCs in Godalming, the town will lose business to Guildford. The suggestion that the Borough Hall in Business Arts or Cathemilia are wholly inadequate. I say that because you've got to look at Godalming, you've got to consider what happens in Godalming. We have a thriving town, we are very proud of our town. We have music in the park, which I understand approximately 1,200 people per Sunday from May to September. We have farmers' markets, food fair, staycation, fireworks and Christmas lights. There are a lot of people coming to Godalming, it helps Godalming, and they need adequate For Farncombe, by very hard work of the residents, with the help of the Farncombe Initiative, it is becoming more and more vibrant. There are some very nice cafes now, there is retail culture, but we need alternate PCs. You can't simply run a town of Godalming or a village of Farncombe without those, it is simple as that. If I could just finally say that we would like discussions to start between officers immediately after our town council has met. And if closure continues, it's going to cost both Waverley and town more, not least because of the loss of confidence our residents will have in us and our ability to reach a solution. We must act now and reach a positive result. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Councillor Edwards, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, I can do it. This item came before the inscrutional, and it came before council. Nobody wants to cut services whatsoever. In Farncombe in particular, it is very costly per head of use and could not be justified to the rest of the borough residents. And although we tried to keep them open, and we opened them for a short while, it became an impossible situation to justify. Other areas of a similar size to Farncombe don't have public toilets. I know that Farnham and Cranley and Hazemere, hopefully, who are going to take on the substantial cost of refurbishing and opening the toilets again, depending on negotiations with Waverley Borough Council, they will have toilets, but they will be fully funded by the local council. And that's all I can say, Leader. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. I think it fair to say that we secured alternate provision in Godalming, and as we said we would. We were right at the point of signing a lease with a provider in Farncombe who suddenly felt unable to proceed. And it is, as councillor Edwards has said, very difficult to justify that sort of level of cost when we look at the rest of the borough. But what we have said is that we've had an approach from the town council, as you probably know. We've already said that we will talk to the town council, we've spoken to the town clerk about that, and we're trying to arrange a meeting. I understand that's a meeting between myself and councillor Edwards and councillor Martin, so it's a matter of trying to get everyone's availability, when councillor Reynolds is also able to attend that meeting. And as I say, we're happy to look at, you know, an alternative plan, but it does have to be something that, you know, at the end of the day, will cover costs. And at the moment, we can't justify reopening those particular toilets, but that's not to say if there isn't, you know, a good business plan in place, that we can't look at that. And that's why, as we've already said, we'll be happy to discuss that. Colleagues, any other points on that before we move to the main item from councillor Hall? No? Oh, councillor Bolton?
I wish to speak on the business rate relief subject. Is that appropriate?
If you'd let councillor Hall's... Councillor Hall, would you like to take the item?
Thank you, Leader. Okay, to give a conclusion, members, we're currently forecast to be on budget for the year. An update on the progress can be found on page 48. Members should also note the business rate relief scheme, which will provide around about 800,000 pounds to qualifying businesses within the borough from 2017 to 2021. This scheme will give a much needed boost to our businesses and should hopefully be up and running in the very near future. So we'll have to sign that, Leader.
Thank you. Councillor Bolton?
Thank you, Leader. I refer to the subject of business rate relief, and in particular, on page 50, the paragraph Roman 5. I understand from discussions with officers, at the moment, this refers to one of the conditions of providing business rate relief, and that applicants should provide a description of the business service they provide to council taxpayers of the Waverley Borough Council. I understand after discussions with officers that this will slightly be expanded and will refer to businesses and services provided to council taxpayers and/or other business rate payers, and a similar change will be made later in that paragraph. In other words, we are not just restricting this to services provided to council taxpayers, but services provided to taxpayers and to business rate payers. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe you've spoken to officers and...
I have, and they've assured me that that will be taken into account.
Mrs McQuillan? Yeah, Mr Bickers?
Thank you, Leader. I agree with councillor Bolton, we'll take that into account this coming week when we look at the full scheme.
Thank you. Right, in that case, does anyone else wish to speak to this item, or can we move to the recommendations? Right, so we have three recommendations on page four. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item nine. Just wait while councillor Deane leaves the room. Right, if we move to item nine, which is the Springbok Planning Application Public Inquiry and a Request for a Supplementary Estimate, councillor Storey?
Thank you, Leader. And may I say, what a pleasure it is, this being my first occasion of speaking to an In June 2016, the officers of the planning department refused an application for a development of over 400 houses and a residential home and shop, a cafe, in Allfold, which subsequently was sent to appeal by the developers. was sent to appeal by the developers in September of 2016. And naturally, we need to defend our position at that inquiry, sorry, at the appeal. We know that the appeal is going to be heard by a local inquiry, which is scheduled to take about eight days. Because the incidence of public inquiries and other lengthy planning processes that are going on, there is no budget left for defending this particular appeal. We estimate that there will be costs for council and for expert witnesses and as a result, the potential cost is £100,000 and so the proposal this evening is to ask for that money to be made available over and above the original budget.
Executive, any comments? Councillor Martin?
I think in essence, we cannot not defend this and the only way to defend it is that we have to spend money, so I mean, I'm all for it despite our budget situation.
Councillor Edwards and then councillor Hall?
Thank you, leader. We really do have to defend this decision and I'm sure the officers made the correct decision in this particular case, knowing Allfold. However, I would ask that we apply for costs on this case and that I don't think they've got a leg to stand on personally, knowing Allfold as I do, and we really need to...
Councillor Edwards, can I just ask you to stick to the actual point on the agenda? We have an inquiry coming up, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, leader. I fully support this and just hope we get costs, thank you.
Please don't get carried away. Right, councillor Hall?
Thank you, leader. Yes, £100,000 is regrettable, but we really don't have any choice, we have to defend our decision and I would support going after costs if we can.
Thank you. So in that case, we have one recommendation on page five, is that agreed? Thank you. Would you like to ask councillor Dinas if he'd like to come back and join us? Right, so if we move to item ten, which is the creation of a property company, councillor Martin?
Thank you, leader. This council has already made one successful acquisition since the creation of the investment board around nine months ago and there is at least one more progressing well. I am confident that more successful acquisitions will be forthcoming in the future to bear fruit and help close our budget deficits. Following recent discussions by the board, it was felt that there is likely to be a requirement in the future for a separate company to be set up to manage some of those acquisitions. Primarily, this company will be set up to oversee assets that fall outside of the council's immediate powers. Residential property development, i.e. that which does not fall under the housing revenue account, and commercial acquisitions that were solely for income generation rather than economic development of the borough would be key. Maintaining flexibility for the council is absolutely vital and that is the primary focus of this item. It is felt it would be better to set this up now, when it could be fully considered, rather than in a hurry due to immediate need is very important. Diversity will always remain key to our investments, big and small, multi and single-tenanted, et cetera, et cetera. I appreciate that some members have concerns around the governance of the proposed company and that is absolutely right. I can assure members that the governance surrounding this company will be kept very much under review. We have already had sound advice from our borough solicitor to ensure we keep honest and true, in particular surrounding what the company will actually do and the purpose it has. Both the company and the investment board will continue to benefit from the advice of our skilled property team. There is a very detailed report to support this item and I commend it to the council to ensure we keep up the pace set up by the investment board and maintain flexibility for the future that will no doubt benefit Waverley's budget. Thank you.
Councillor Martin, thank you. Councillor Hall?
Yeah, I'd like to support very strongly what councillor Martin said, leader. I mean, one of our recent experiences in one of our properties was that the speed of reaction was absolutely essential in order that we could pursue an opportunity and having a proper degree of flexibility is crucial to get the best deals and the best commercial terms of any deals we may be looking at.
Colleagues, any other comments?
I think what I would like to just highlight is one of the comments made by councillor Martin and picking up on a conversation I had with councillor Williamson, in terms of the actual governance and the remit, if you like, and the terms of reference of this company. Obviously, this is a new departure, if you like, for Waverley and we as members are very much aware of that. And what I feel is important is that we have built in here a flexibility so that we can review this and if there is anything that we need to look at, we can do so. But what I would ask is that offline, councillor Martin and, if I may, the borough solicitor actually sort of arrange a review date for one of the investment board meetings so that we can just, again, I know we haven't actually purchased anything through this, but just again, review this and make sure that we, you know, we are absolutely happy in terms of, you know, content in terms of the governance. Would that be agreeable? Right, okay. Yes?
On setting up the company, isn't it a requirement to name the owners and directors? I know the owner is the council, but the directors and the company secretary, should that not be declared as to who those are going to be?
Yes, I think you'll find councillor Adams that if you look to the report, it's actually a delegated authority. But I'm looking to Mr Bainbridge just to clarify.
Yeah, councillor Adams is quite right, those details will be lodged with the company's house, so they'll be fully open to inspection by the public, just as any company's details are, so directors and company secretaries and other information as well, of course.
So, leader, are we allowed to know the name of this company then?
I don't think that's been decided yet, that's not the purpose of the report. So the report is seeking authority to set it up and there are certain delegations that flow from the report. So I don't think the name has been decided, I don't think the identity of those individuals has been decided yet.
You set it up without those names?
That's all to be decided. So there is authority to give delegation for officers to go away and do that, obviously through the investment board, which the executive and the council set up, so we will go away and do that obviously through the investment board.
We'll make sure that once that happens, it actually, I think what would be helpful is if it came back, so it's reported back to the executive, so everyone's absolutely clear on this, all right? So the recommendations at this stage are that we can proceed to the actual setup of the company, there are three recommendations, are those agreed?
Agreed.
Right. Moving, if I'm, sorry, Mr Tate? Oh, sorry. I've got one speaker for item eleven, which is the Waden Lane former landfill site, future use and site management, so if I can move to councillor Hyman?
Thank you, leader. I wonder whether you were going to introduce this item at all, because it might save me from asking a couple of things? No, I'll ask then, okay, thank you. It looks to me as though what it says here is that we're putting the feasibility study, the £50,000 feasibility study which was agreed, putting that on hold until after the next election, two or three years, whatever. The obvious question is how much money's been spent so far, because I can't find that in this report. It does say £10,000 has been spent on further legal advice and because of that and the fact that the council doesn't have heaps of money to go forward with it and do the clay capping and that sort of thing, that we will be just looking at it later. Now, so there's one item there, how much have we spent? I know residents have got a lot of concerns and they range from things like, is Waverley wasting money on these studies and whatever that could have been used to improve the Waden Lane landfill site and within the restrictions of the covenants, obviously, because they've been waiting a long time for things to happen. Not entirely sure they want the football club there because they're not sure of the parking issues and whatever, of course, but they've seen no plans. Other concerns from the residents, obviously, Waverley is ignoring the covenants and the need for appropriation at the memorial ground and tried to ignore the need for planning permission down there and that was regularised recently, as you know. Those concerns obviously carry over into this, how can residents be sure that the problems that there are with overcoming or getting round the covenants are going to be done properly? And of course, there's further concerns about building housing on the memorial ground, leader. But my issue here is we need to know where the law stands and members need to know where the law stands when they vote on this. You've said that there's £10,000 spent on further advice, so firstly, does that consider the lawfulness of the memorial groundwork in respect of the need for appropriation and compliance with the covenants? If you could answer that please. And secondly, will you allow the legal opinions to be made available to councillors so that we can see those? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hyman. I think I've got the gist of what you're saying and basically, there was £50,000 have been set aside, I can confirm that £10,000, as per the report, has been spent. That's what's been spent. Now, the situation we have is, as you're aware, our funding is very challenged and at the moment, whilst we are in that situation, we are not going ahead and spending further money at that site. This is in relation to the Waden Lane landfill site, we're not talking about the memorial hall or the football club, we're talking about the Waden Lane landfill site. Because I know you've brought some of the other things into this, but we're talking about Waden Lane here and at the moment, we are not spending any more money on Waden Lane.
Councillor Edwards?
Yes, thank you, leader. Following the work of the special interest group on the future of Waden Lane landfill site in 1516, funding was identified in the 1617 budget for a feasibility study into the future use of the site and the possibility of relocating the Farnham Football Club on to the site, freeing up the football club site for housing development. All right, legal advice sought at the first stage of that feasibility study identified wide legal implications and obstacles to overcome in relation to restricted covenants on both sites before any work could be done to progress these proposals. Now, on the basis of this advice, a range of options were considered and these are set out in paragraph six of the report. Now, the council's faced significant financial challenges in its budget-setting process for 1718 and as a result, major projects planned had to be reviewed. It was subsequently resolved as part of the financial strategy 1718 to 1920 that in the light of the significant cuts to Waverley's new homes bonus, the progression of all capital projects that do not generate a positive revenue benefit be suspended. On the basis of this budget decision and the likely cost of progressing the original proposals for the redevelopment of the site cannot currently be progressed and option F, to look at revisiting the feasibility study at a later date, is recommended. Thank you.
Councillor Edwards, thank you. Any other comments from the executive? Councillor Storey?
Thank you, leader. I was a member of the special interest group which looked into this. My comments are really that the costs involved in doing almost anything to this particular field are astronomical. Making it safe is beyond our budget, let alone dealing with putting other uses on there. And so just keeping it in a static position is about as much as we can do at the moment and so I am heartily in favour of the recommendation that is put forward.
Thank you. As I've said, I'm not keen that we spend money, you know, when at the moment, you know, there's really nowhere for us to go on this. And if at a later stage, we can find a way to do something, that's fine, but at the moment, we absolutely just have not got that sort of money, we cannot justify it. We have to look at our core services and making sure we protect those at this present time.
Colleagues, there are two recommendations under item eleven, are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. If we move to item twelve, which is the Brightwell site security with the report pages seventy-five to seventy-eight, councillor Hyman, you wanted to speak?
Thank you, leader. I'm wondering whether perhaps in view of the fact that councillor Edwards could have done his portfolio holder's introduction to the item at the beginning of it, I don't know, is there a portfolio holder who'll be introducing this, who would like to speak before I speak or not?
No, if you'd like to speak first, that's fine. Thank you, councillor Hyman.
Thank you very much, leader. I'm wondering here, when did the security patrol start? Because this isn't actually a decision for the executive to commence a patrol, is it? I understand from here what it says in paragraph eight and at the very beginning of the item as well, that it's saying that it started already and then it's going to be, we're going to have security patrols over the summer, I think that's what it's saying. And then presumably, later on in the year, September time, we're going to be considering, or you'll be considering, whether to remove that security and have none or whether to continue that ad infinitum and I have to ask myself, perhaps why not use passive infrared or CCTV activated cameras? If it's going to be another 15 years before CRES can come up with feasible proposals, then, you know, is this going to become an expense to the public purse which we shouldn't be starting upon? Because I don't know that it's going to make an awful lot of difference. But I think perhaps before the members make their decision, if it were to make any difference, I'd ask that you update members in respect of the current position in making the developer contract unconditional, because that's what they'll be considering, should be considering today and would be considering probably in September. So whether it's necessary perhaps for road closure orders first, that's my understanding, they've got to be done and stopping up orders so that East Street can be pedestrianised, so we'd like an update on that to so that we know how long this is going to go on for. Whether the modelling of the impact of CRES pedestrianisation is going to be done or whether it's still your position that the modelling can and should be left until after things have commenced. So I'm really asking if we're going to do things properly, this could be a long-term security contract, it could be expensive, perhaps there are other options members like to consider? Perhaps we should know exactly what the situation is at present, if you'd like to let us know. Thank you, ma'am, leader.
Thank you, councillor Hyman. This item actually relates to site security at Brightwell, so obviously I'll stick to that item. You asked when the security patrol started? You asked when the security patrol started, and they actually started on the 26th of June. They were started as a matter of urgency, given the nature of the last break-in. There have been a number of issues at that site, and I know that, as the various board members are aware of those. And given that we have real concerns, very serious concerns, as do the police and other authorities, about the health and safety aspect, and especially, as I say, about site security, and one of the issues has been people who've been breaking into that derelict building. It is extremely dangerous inside. I went in a few weeks ago accompanied, but I was absolutely shocked at that, and the fact that, you know, that there could easily be a very serious accident if people are in there. So we need to do all we can to actually protect and keep people safe, because that site is unfortunately not safe. And so that, I hope, answers that part of your question. Any other comments, executive? Yes, councillor Dinas?
Thank you, Leader. Obviously, we're responsible for community safety and safeguarding for the borough. This interests me on what we do on this. You quite rightly said that unfortunately, you get damage to the property, which can cause injury to people. Often, and almost always, people start fires in these type of buildings. We know it's a magnet for drug-taking, it always has been and always will be, and unfortunately, when you look at safeguarding, and people who are vulnerable tend to get drawn into this world. We have a responsibility to protect people, and that's why we're writing a safeguarding policy. And, you know, yes, it's disappointing we're spending this money, I think we would all agree with that, but we have to do it. So I am disappointed with spending the money, but I accept it, and I think it's the only course of action we've got. Unless someone can come with an alternative solution, I'm glad that councillor Hyman has come up with some ideas about equipment and CCTV. They are massive costs. The cost of the equipment, the cost of installation, and then you have to monitor them 24 hours. And you have to have a human element to respond. So, yes, seven and a half thousand pounds is regrettable, but the cost would be, you could add zeros to that, and I certainly wouldn't want to do that. So, in summary, very regrettable, unless there's an alternative solution that can be done, but something I think we have to support. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you, councillor Dinas. Any other comments, colleagues? Right, in that case, can we move to the recommendation, which is on page 12, sorry, item 12 on page six? There is one recommendation.
Agreed.
Thank you. And can I then move to item 13, which is the performance management report for quarter four, so that's January to March 2017? The report itself gives an analysis of the outturn performance for both the council's performance indicators across all services, and the actions contained within the 2016-17 service plan. The majority of services, I think you'd agree, have performed very well across this period of time. Of particular note is the excellent performance in the area of planning applications that have been determined within the target times, and the work of the housing options team in preventing homelessness. And I think the latter, the preventing homelessness, is absolutely crucial. There is so much work done by that team, so much that isn't well-known across the council, but they do an amazing job, they really do. So I'd like to pass on my thanks to all the officers in that team for a job really well-done. The service plan outturn report does demonstrate that the large amount of work that's been carried out by our service teams in the last financial year has really been phenomenal, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank staff for helping us to achieve the majority and nearly all our corporate objectives. It's really, really good to see. And I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank the overview and scrutiny committees for their consideration of the reports and their comments, which are very much appreciated and have been really constructive and useful as well. Colleagues, any other comments around this item? Councillor Dinas?
Thank you, Leader. I think it was probably two meetings ago, when we went through performance, we spoke about flytipping, and I asked for some sort of basic work to be done, just to see if we could identify locations, dates, because obviously, there's been an increase, I know it's been an increase of what's been reported to me, and with amenity centres closing certain days and other threats, unfortunately, I haven't received anything, and I would just make a respectful reminder that I'm still waiting from that previous executive. I don't want warm peace, but just something that maybe the jet then can look at, and we can pass on to members if there's issues in their boards. Thank you.
Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Leader. Apologies for not receiving the map, but we do have a map with all the locations on there that we've attended, and I'm sure that the head of service will supply those. I've got one other comment, actually, Leader, regarding the performance indicators. We used to have, and I know it's been changed for one reason or another, I was chairman for many years of the community ONS review of this particular area, and we used to have two-year figures. And what that did, it helped us identify the shape of the performance, because you'll note there's quite a few in environment in red, but this particular quarter always goes up and exceeds by far the target, whereas the following quarter, it goes down substantially because of the shape of the business. And having a two-year would indicate where we are compared to last year. That's all I'm saying, and it would be helpful. Thank you.
Right, okay, we can note that and review that with the officers, but that's absolutely fine. Thank you. Any other comments? Mrs King?
Thank you, Leader. Just like to take the opportunity to thank officers in councillor Edwards' team, of course, this week, last week, to report the first time I've ever seen flytipping in a particular area within my ward. It was removed within 24 hours. It was much appreciated by the residents. Thank you.
I think, I mean, I frequently see it on the A31, sort of around the one-fold area, which again comes under our borough, and I know the team are always very quick to get out there. The issue, I think, that we all have, A is the fact that this is happening, B, the fact that this is costing us as a borough a significant amount of money, and obviously, I think we are all concerned that, you know, with some of the potential plans for the community recycling centres, which again, I fully understand and appreciate the constraints with which our county colleagues are working, but that too could impact severely on the borough. So it is a matter of concern, and I think the gravest of concerns is sort of the detriment to the environment and the cost, which is significant and is of real concern. Colleagues, any other comments? Or can we move to the recommendations? Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Can I now move to item 14, which is the outcome of the ONS review, which is the leisure centre management? And thank you very much to councillor Seaborn and councillor Ramsdale for attending this evening. I think if I'm correct as well, councillor Hyman sat on that committee as well. So forgive me, I can't remember all the members of the committee, councillor Hess was another, but if I've missed anyone, then apologies, but first, before you do present, my thanks to all of you for the time you took, because I know that it was a very diligent review. So can I hand over to the two of you to actually take that forward?
Can everybody hear me now? Right. Thank you for having us to present this evening, Leader. It looks like the bosses are going to have to look at my back, because I can then address the important people, or is that the wrong way around? This is a very summary report of the document you got in your packs. We're just going to give you a few of the highlights of this project that was started, would you believe, when I was the chair of community ONS. That evolved on to Gerry becoming the chairman, Gerry got very involved in the project, and then we moved on, and it became a part of community wellbeing. Hence, you've got two people who are not from community wellbeing in front of you, presenting a document that went through community ONS a week or so ago. This review was largely triggered when two of us, Christian Hess and I, were concerned about a number of things. He was concerned that this corporate plan or our corporate strategy was actually cascading down the structures, and therefore was concerned as to whether everything we were doing was in alignment with achieving that plan. And I was concerned, as you probably heard me beat on about years ago, that it was very easy for ONS to be identifying other things that needed to happen or be being done, but not so easy, or we were putting a lot of effort into finding things that were happening and could be saved on. And you've all heard me talk about the milk crate, where if you wanted to do an extra task, you could have taken some bottles out to create the space, i.e. create the funds, to carry on and doing them. So we were trying to find a bit of balance in there. Clearly, we could have gone and looked at a big area of the council that was all very difficult, but we also, at the same time, wanted to establish a process by which we could do it. So to be honest, we picked what we thought would be a strong-performing area of the council, we had discussions with officers, not least the senior one behind me, and came up with the leisure centres and the management of the leisure centres within the council. We, as I said, asked ONS, and they endorsed it. What we're looking for you to do now is not just endorse this, but to take it on board, own it, and take action with it. What we're going to cover now is some background on how we got here, some of our findings, and then particularly, Richard is going to look at opportunities. Both opportunities that are specific to this service, so how we could do a better service, or just what would be a better service, but also things that we found that are really positive, that could perhaps be used elsewhere, particularly in other contractual relationships, where we're working with other large organisations who perhaps carry the badge of the council to our residents. The background to this is a little complicated, in that the contract was first signed with an organisation called DC Leisure back in 2007 for a 15-year period. But DC Leisure were required by Places for People, or PFP, in 2012, who are a non, or a not-profit organisation. And they, in return for managing all our leisure centres, they get a management fee, but I think more importantly, and reflects the nature of the relationship, they get a profit-sharing arrangement with Waverley. As I said, the review started in November 2016, and the reasons for the nature of the review were longstanding contract, hadn't been looked at in depth, what were the pluses, what were the negatives? The leisure centres have absorbed an awful lot of capital, and indeed, will continue to do so. And is that generating the right funds and the returns? But then, the perceived success of this contract meant we thought there were lessons to learn to take elsewhere. So, and not least, it was a good area for us to run, what in some ways was thought to be a pilot, to establish good practice, not finding ourselves getting too bogged down in all the documentation, or the things we were trying to document about what was not going right. I think we ended up with a lot more to do than we expected, but hey-ho. So what did we find? We found a really healthy, positive collaborative relationship between the PFP staff and our own staff. Would you believe we, or members in our team, interviewed every leisure centre manager from PFP? They came up with a consistent view of the world, and a great relationship with our staff, and indeed, our staff said separately to us, was entirely consistent with what the PFP people said. And it was clear there was ideas on continuous improvement and innovation being shared across the table, not least PFP bringing things from outside, but also our own staff, and there's a big positive here, who also have background on having been on the other side of the fence in some of these relationships. Attendance at the leisure centres massively gone up, and depending on how you play the numbers, they're in a breakeven position now financially, as opposed to receiving a massive subsidy, or possibly even making a positive contribution. Oversight of the contractor was very impressive. I attended that particular interview, the evidence as to how to do it was detailed, it was well-informed, well-documented, and it was effective. Our staff knew exactly where the things were going, and the contract managers expressed the views that they knew our staff could find them out if there was a problem. And the other good thing was that the well-documented nature meant that if the proverbial London bus hit the key members of staff, the documents meant that two other members of staff coming in could pick them up, read them, and carry on. Not an ideal position, but a strong position from the situation of our documentation. And perhaps a reassurance to me, and now to Jed, was that we didn't find any areas where we needed to go drastically looking for cost savings or suspicions of there being cost savings. But this, to me, is perhaps a crunch of the handover to Richard, is, is this positive financial position? Is this increased numbers of people attending? Is this great relationship? Is that what we want? Or more precisely, is that what all of you want? What is it we want to be getting out of our leisure centres? Is it as much profit as we can get? Or should we be subsidising to maximise the number of people attending them? Or should we be subsidising certain things that'll help wellbeing and health of people, perhaps especially excluded children or other weaker groups in our society? Perhaps in this time of financial concern or constraint, then greater emphasis should be given to finance, maybe for a period of time? Depends on how generous perhaps Jed's feeling. And maybe that's right, because then we're protecting other services. That bit of what we found, we didn't kind of find the answer to. But on that happy note, I'm glad to pass on to Richard.
So following on from Wyatt's last comment, yeah, opportunities for improvement and lessons to be passed on. The subcommittee had difficulty in identifying the commercial and wellbeing expectations to which PFP are expected to perform. So, you know, we were given the task of identifying how well the leisure centres were being managed, but actually, it's not clearly written down anywhere what we expect from them. So I think the first recommendation... So I think the first recommendation stands out far and above all the other recommendations we come up with. As a matter of urgency, we felt that it's important that the portfolio holder together with the head of service conducts some work to determine exactly what Waverley want from the leisure centres, remembering it's a discretionary service. We don't have to provide it, we have the option of making money out of it, we have the option of breaking even, or we have the option of focusing on wellbeing and subsidising the service, and that's not clear. So actually, without that clarity, it makes it impossible to determine whether PFP are doing a good job or not because we don't know exactly what we're expecting them to deliver. That sounds overly negative. In fact, they do appear to be doing a very good job, but that's based on our assumption rather than the hard letter. So I think far and above everything else, the challenge to come up with a policy that states what Waverley wants from its leisure centres. Moving on down to detail, the subcommittee found it quite challenging to readily access summary management accounting information to show whether the leisure centres are delivering a surplus to Waverley's residents or if they're requiring subsidy. So we're recommending that a continuous assessment of financial value for money is carried out by comparing revenue generated for Waverley by PFP with Waverley's internal operating costs. It's all there, it was a challenge to get it all pulled together so that we could see it in a readily understandable form. So we're suggesting a specific budget monitoring template for leisure centres should be created to improve the financial and commercial management and analysis. Fairly straightforward thing, but I think very powerful to make sure we know exactly where we sit money-wise. I think it's fair to say that the level of support being given by the finance team to the leisure centres is fairly minimal, partly due to someone leaving the team and a more experienced member having to take over on a part-time basis. So we're suggesting that the finance team should start collecting good practice procedures by the management accountant, in particular particularly those used by the current management accountant for leisure, who's really experienced and knows exactly what he's doing, so that we've got quality information for any handover or backup if the postholder is not available. And then in time, all this best practice should be pulled together in a financial Next point is that we observed that Waverley puts an awful lot of effort into understanding risk in an area at the start of a contract and then when we're about to renew it, they put a lot of effort into it. But what we didn't identify on an ongoing basis was risk understanding of our leisure centre business day-to-day. A couple of years ago, David Lloyd, one of the big commercial competitors in this area, got into serious trouble and was taken over. So, you know, we don't want that happening, creeping up on us with PFP. It'd be good, as far as we understand, they're very healthy, but what we didn't see was day-to-day monitoring to make sure that that health really exists. So we're recommending that. Finding metrics against which we can compare our performance was also a challenge. So we're recommending that it would be healthy for the leisure centre team to talk to adjacent authorities with similar kind of leisure centre arrangements and see if we can actually share performance metrics to see how well we're actually doing against other leisure centres. During the course of the review, there was quite a lot of comment about that particular authority's doing really well, that authority's not doing particularly well, and you actually look and actually, it always felt like we were in pole position. But it's not formalised, so we're recommending that might be a good thing to do, get some data from elsewhere and talk to other people so that we really know how we stack up. So there are plenty of other recommendations in the report, but I think that those were the key highlights. I just want to finish off by highlighting the opportunities that we identified from what appears to be a very successful management process for other major contracts that Waverley's running with other contractors. What our study highlighted was the importance of the in-house experience and skills of the contract management team. We've got some great people administering this for us. So we're getting the service delivered through a contract by people who understand what they're doing. And that's not to run down anyone elsewhere, we just observed that this is a key strength here and it'd be good to make sure that that's happening with all our other big contracts, that we've got people who really understand the business. It'd be good for all the other major contracts to note that the promotion of a partnership ethos with the contractor based on shared commitment to excellence and effective risk allocation would be good. That was really clear here. You know, when there's a problem, Waverley and PFP work it together and the risks are shared and everyone buys into the solution. So really strong opportunity elsewhere, we think. We noted the promotion of openness and trust and the shared and collaborative way of problem solving. So again, a lot of this should be sort of, you know, motherhood apple pie. Hopefully it is, but we've observed this is good and it'd be worth other contracts checking to make sure they've got this. And then the contract itself was structured such that both client and contractor can promote innovation, flexibility and adaptation where necessary. So a good thing when we're coming to renew our contracts to see if we can factor in those particular aspects. And then finally, PFP use a tool called Quest to drive continuous improvement. It's externally managed, it's a commercially available tool and it really was doing a great job driving performance. And so we're suggesting that if other service areas can identify commercially available tools run by external bodies, so no one's got an axe to grind, it could be very powerful. We're not aware of any, but Quest was really working well. Some of our leisure centres are performing, you know, top quartile in the country and that's being driven by Quest. So if similar tools exist, we think they'd be very useful to look out for and adopt. So with that, those are the highlights. Any questions?
I had councillor Dinas and I think councillor Else, you wanted to come in?
Question.
Okay.
Probably my final question is just actually a thank you for the presentation because often when you get sort of reviews and everything else, it's quite hard to pick out the relevant points. And tonight enabled me to almost put the rest of it to bed and just listen to what the relevant bit, so it's hit home a lot more. So I found it really useful, Leader, as a way of getting those points rather than trying to dig through them. I won't go into the actual details because I'm sure my colleagues will do that, but thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Councillor Hall, did you have a question or want to comment on the presentation and then I'll go to councillor Else?
Thank you, Leader. Yeah, I mean, I think this is an excellent report and I think it's one you can be very proud of. Clearly some very in-depth work being done of huge benefit. I mean, just on a couple of the points, I mean, the idea of having metrics and a budget template for each leisure centre is a brilliant idea. That way you can compare the key metrics and see how each one's doing against another. The analysis, the financial analysis for value for money, again, I mean, we should be already doing this, but it's very good that you've highlighted it. Risk thresholds for PFP and comparison metrics with neighbouring boroughs, I'd probably take that offline with you. I'd just be very interested to see your methodology. But now, all in all, I think this is an excellent report and a great piece of work and thank you, everybody that was involved.
Councillor Hall, thank you and my thanks to you both. Can I hand over to the portfolio holder, councillor Else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Well, I'd just like to thank the overview and scrutiny committee for undertaking this comprehensive review of the leisure contract with Places for People. The purpose of the review, as we've heard, was to explore its effectiveness, the effectiveness, sorry, of the contract and to identify opportunities for improvement, including potential cost savings and lessons which might be applied to other major council contracts. So the reasons behind the review were very sound. The leisure centres have benefited from significant capital funding during our administration and although the financial return and usage figures have increased also significantly, the contract itself has had relatively low levels of member scrutiny. So we welcome this very much. The review was very comprehensive, it included the site visits as we've heard at all five sites and giving the committee greater insight into the operational side of running a leisure centre. And I'm pleased to see recommendation one, which I think will help us as members to focus on why we run our leisure centres. This is what we need to work on now, not just for financial return, but for the health and wellbeing of our communities. So thank you for pointing that very obvious issue out, but it is something that we do need to work on and be able to present. So that was very helpful indeed. I'm going to work closely with officers to bring this policy through as soon as possible. And this report will help to inform the forthcoming leisure facility strategy and the feasibility strategy, looking at further investments in our leisure stock, which we actually started this afternoon. And once again, I'd just like to thank you very much indeed for all your work in completing this review and I fully support the recommendations you've made. Thank you.
Colleagues, any other comments? Councillor Bolton?
Thank you, Leader. You commented on other councils and centres. I wasn't clear on what basis you were making those comments. Have you done a formal review of others and if so, how do we compare formally?
No, no, so we haven't. And I think therein lies the whole rub of the suggestion, you know, we just don't know how we stack up. It feels like we're doing very well. But other people, you know, during the course of it, other people did come up to us and say, actually, you know, I think East Hampshire, for instance, have very, very good centres, they may be cheaper. But, you know, but it really depends what we want to achieve. But knowing and understanding what other people are doing, why they're doing it and how well they're doing it, I think would help us to understand better how well we're doing.
Certainly anecdotally, people believe we're running really good leisure centres, but that goes back to what's your aim, what's your target, you know? Are we really, really good ones because we're making lots of money out of them? And East Ham's running really big ones, good ones, because they've got more people going through them? And is somewhere running really good ones because they're achieving better subsidies for the groups of people that need to... Which goes back to that first recommendation. What I kind of see myself coming out of that is, given the other people who are the customers of leisure centres, our other local authorities, why shouldn't we be sharing those same financial models or templates and looking over each other's shoulder and saying, well, why are they doing better than us on that and vice versa? And in PFP, because they've got their own network where they want to, you know, if they find a really good idea in Waverley and they've also got leisure centres in Newcastle, they'll want to take the ideas. And the beauty about the relationship with PFP is that if one side comes up with a good idea, both sides will benefit, so both work at it. It's a really positive thing that if Richard's looking, I want him to try and apply our new contracts coming up.
Thank you councillor Ramsdale, that's really helpful. Councillor Edwards?
Just a quick one. You're talking about best practice here and we need to look at the best practice, wherever it may be, and try and shape our business to best practice. And, you know, I know the leader is always looking for that opportunity and the officer also, and we'll definitely do that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Edwards. I think we're all agreed that it really is an excellent review and my thanks to all involved officers, all the councillors and also all the other parties who fed into this. I noticed that we have a number, it's a very comprehensive report, it was excellent presentation, very comprehensive report and recommendations running across three pages which make absolute sense and a number of them, what I like is that actually we can reapply these in other areas of our business. And again, that's what we need to be doing, we need to be asking questions, we need to be challenging and we need to be acting upon lessons learned. So it is about best practice, as councillor Edwards has said. I'm really encouraged by this report and the findings. I think as an executive, we are, you know, and I speak on behalf of the portfolio holder again as well at this point, but thank you for this and as I say, I look forward to actually seeing these recommendations as they're implemented. And I think what would be really useful, as perhaps an item to note, would be this actually, so that we know where this is going and what's happening as a result of this, could we actually put this back on to the agenda as an update? I'm just keen that we often do projects, we often do reviews and it concerns me at times that although we do then continually act upon them, that we need to actually, I think, keep and raise the profile of these. So can we make sure that we've got that noted, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Sorry, you wanted to come back councillor Else?
Yes, thank you for letting me come back, Leader. I wonder if you could put it on the forward programme?
That's absolutely fine, we'll do that. I think that's the best place for it so that we've got it there and that's what we'll indeed do. Any other comments or can we move to the recommendation and again, thank councillor
Right, so on a very upbeat note, let's continue on the leisure theme and move to item 15, which is Rowledge Tennis Club and the granting of a new lease. I've got councillor Hall, councillor Dinas and councillor Martin. Which one of you would like to talk to this? Councillor? Dinas?
Yeah, well you want someone who's going to talk some sense anyway, so.
Oh, sorry.
I'll try and keep this brief, conscious to what people say about me. So Rowledge is a small tennis club at the edge of the recreation ground. There's been recent grants to the cricket and bowling club and therefore it's necessary to have a lease for the tennis club for a period of 40 years. Now this will be in a standard form for sports facilities and it allows an SLA that can be modified over the term to meet changing needs and I think that's really important. The lease will also allow the club to apply for grants. Terms and conditions are an exempt. This is cost neutral with a possible £600 saving for the council and has the advantage of removing responsibility to the club and reducing risks away from the council, which I'm sure we all appreciate. There's one recommendation which is on the page 140 of the papers and agenda item 15, page 7, which I recommend for approval. Thank you.
Colleagues, the report itself is in exempt, I don't propose to go into exempt. Is that recommendation on page 7 under item 15 agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item 16, executive director's actions. Mr Roberts?
Leader, there are no actions to report under this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Roberts. Colleagues, can I move to item 17 and that is the exclusion of the press and public? So can, is that, can I ask, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Colleagues, can I ask you to note that recommendation rather than me reading it out in great detail? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. We'll wait whilst... We'll wait whilst...